The seventh lap, call the meeting to order. Mrs. Dickman, would you lead us in the public speeches?
Public speeches to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As the record show, all board members are present. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
Yes, it has.
Time to public comments. For policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, a parent or a guardian of an enrolled district student or an enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must physically be present at the meeting and must register in advance. A total time allotment of thirty minutes will be given for public comment. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. A translator may be used to translate verbal communication to the board. If such translation services are used, six minutes shall be given to that participant with only the first three minutes being designated in total time allotment. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make specific persons the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end of their comments. I'm seeing nothing for public comments, and we'll move on to four reports. The Student Council report.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Catherine, all of the vice presidents of this year's Student Council. Tonight I'm here to tell you all about the various things the council has been doing this year. Homecoming was a success with the theme of Through the Decades. The council would like to thank everyone who helped make this year's homecoming a success. Currently, we have four committees each working on projects. The fundraising and school improvement committees are collaborating on a new project which provide feminine hygiene projects, projects in the restroom. They are still in the process of working on the logistics, but more information will be coming. The Student Council is eager to introduce this project to the school. The Events Committee is hosting the first blood drive of the year. The blood drive will be held this Thursday, the thirtieth, and to my knowledge, there are still some open spots. The Community/School Service Committee is bringing back Toilet Talks, which feature important info such as sporting events and fun facts on the back of the restroom stalls. A couple of Fridays ago, I, along with our president, Zeta Ludwig, and a couple of other executive board members, attended the Wisconsin Association of School Council's Fall Leadership Tour at UW Madison. We all gained some knowledge and ideas from surrounding schools of how we can improve our very own council. As a whole council, we have been giving thoughts and feedback about the school song change happening in the future. Student Council will also be helping run wrestling concessions for the RC invite on December sixteenth. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you. The District Administrators' report.
Okay, just a few items. I've mentioned the state convention going on from January seventeenth through that Friday, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. I know we've heard back from a couple of board members. If you are still debating whether or not you can attend, you would need to let Laura Steele know by Wednesday, as in two days from now, by the end of the day at four o'clock. After that, we need to release our rooms. If something did come up where you changed your mind down the road, we can still, you know, get you registered, but lodging may be problematic and certainly would not be in the same lane as the rest of the Richland School District folks. So if you are wanting or thinking that you can attend the state convention, we would need to know by Wednesday so that we can make the necessary hotel arrangements. Right now, we have Ms. Traxel going and Mr. Bailey going. And Ms. Worts may attend today, but you're still.
May.
Yeah, okay. So that's what we have for that. If you have any questions, let me know. Until we meet again for a regular board meeting on December eleventh, we will have two committee meetings. Our policy as well as curriculum will be meeting on December seventh. Those meetings will start at six P M., but we have not determined the lighter of the two and therefore have not determined which one will go at six o'clock. I'll make sure I let the board know as soon as that's established. But we will be having both of those on Thursday, December seventh, for our December meetings. That's it. Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you. Four C, board member reports.
Buildings Property and Transportation met Thursday, November sixteenth. We met at the Intermediate School. Topic one was our usual schedule at a glance to just make sure that we're not missing anything or if important items need to come further ahead. We got an update from Mr. Brian Jones on vehicle updates and replacement plan. They have kind of a standard rotating list that is just a standard yearly discussion. We reviewed the count of appliances in all the classrooms for safety reasons. The Town and Country Sanitation contract had been, the motion had been moved, passed to move it to the full board as far as our disposal. Topic five was the referendum discussion. And Mr. Bosworth helped kind of discuss some of the tax ramifications of different avenues that we could explore, how that would change the bill rate, et cetera. And lastly, we did a site visit of the intermediate building to just see some of the, some of the inner workings and needed areas.
The Richland School District Foundation met November twentieth. The big piece that we talked about was updating the bylaws, which are pretty original when it was formed back in the early nineties. So we are going to be revisiting that with the changes that we have discussed so that we have opportunity to look at those more completely for the December meeting. Also had a couple of scholarships that were discussed, the Mackenzie Sherman Scholarship and then the Paul Momendorf Funds. Paul Momendorf Funds are going to be shifted from being a scholarship to actually being used in the tech head department to help buy some much-needed equipment. And then we had the Personnel and Negotiations Committee. That was on the sixteenth of November. Looked at schedule at glance, and then with the OPEC benefits, we decided to table that discussion until February, which we're not going to discuss that as is on our schedule for December, with the potential of including that in the potential referendum. We decided just to table that for now. We will be discussing that and taking action on that policy later this evening for extending the existing policy. Went through another round of job descriptions, got those cleaned up. We also created, in the beginning stages of creating, the Sting Coordinator position. That's needed because right now there are several people doing several different things that are not appointed person. So this coordinator would create that individual point of contact, not necessarily doing all the work that all the people are doing, but just to get that, to let one person that people can go to if they have questions. And then we also went through referendum discussion and information. We'll be going through more of that this evening as well.
Thank you. Time to four D, Drug-Free Communities Grants Report.
So one of our reports tonight is Betsy Raisler, our coordinator of the Drug-Free Communities Grant. The Drug-Free Communities Grant is a grant that the Richland School District is the fiscal agent for. It's more of a community and county-wide impact. And Mrs. Raisler is here tonight to give an update on that grant.
Thank you, Juan. I'm here tonight so that I can provide information to you about, so you can make a decision in the coming weeks about the, whether to continue as the fiscal agent for the Drug-Free Communities Grant. So it's five years old now, and this community grant has provided us with catalyst funding to inspire positive changes in the community. So people from all sectors work together to identify and address what is sustaining the problem of youth substance use and for us to have a safer and healthier place to live. So this is where we started out. If you recall, in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, our coalition accepted the funding from the federal government. And you can recognize some of the people on the board at the time, at that time. And in two thousand twenty-three, this is a picture of us hosting our third annual national night out. And in five years, we've strategized to provide a constant variety of information to educate the community. We've built partnerships. We've helped to build skills of servers, parents, youth, assess the environment, collected opinions, worked to strengthen policies, and recruited partners to sustain the strategies. And now it's time to consider what to do. So our fifth year began in September, and the funding will end at the end of September. We're eligible to apply for another five years, beginning in February, and that application is due in April. And then coalitions are notified of their award in September. And this process is very competitive again, much like the first time when, when only thirty percent are, of coalitions or communities that apply are awarded with the funds. So it'll be competitive again. So just a quick overview of our coalition again. Our, our mission is to engage Richland County residents to prevent, to prevent youth substance use by creating safe and healthy communities. We have two primary goals. Our goal is to get people to work together because it will take all of us to look at the conditions in the community that are sustaining the problem. And then our goal is to reduce youth substance use, specifically those teen years. And we use a process called the Strategic Prevention Framework. And you can see the framework on the right there. We're doing a lot of assessments. We're building capacity. We're planning the strategies. We're implementing them. We're all, all throughout the process evaluating. It's very fluid. We're looking at the cultural conditions, and then any strategy we pick, we try to sustain. And we're represented by twelve sectors in the community. You have a handout, maybe some of you are sharing. You can see the people involved. Next slide. So really important to understand that this is the long game of preventing so that adults don't develop a substance use disorder. We know that nine in ten adults who develop a substance use disorder started in their teens. So the impact on a child's brain. Strategies are focused around, you can go to the next slide, of changing the conditions in the community. You can go to the next slide. It's up to schools and families and Health and Human Services and hospitals, extension, community organizations, churches to work on the frogs in that pond. But it's a coalition's role to look at the pond itself. So that's what we've been doing. What are the conditions sustaining the problem of youth substance use? Our priorities are tobacco, underage drinking, marijuana, and the misuse of prescription drugs. We look at these risk factors. What are the norms? How are they getting it? What are the, what are the perceptions around how harmful it is? And then how is it being promoted and the price? For example, the cost of tobacco is actually cheaper in Richland County than it is in Dane County. So that's a disparity. So then we're looking at the conditions in the community, and then as a coalition, we're taking action. So I'm going to allow our youth to talk about, as they do represent one of the sectors on our coalition, to talk about their experience.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chloe. I came right from basketball practice, so I'm kind of a mess right now, so I apologize. But I am a Youth for Change leader, and the reason I joined this group was because I had personal experience. A friend a few years back, we were really, really close, and she ended up choosing her addiction over our friendship before moving away. So that was kind of impactful, and I wanted to make a difference. So some of our accomplishments this year, we had lessons at the intermediate school. We brought some lungs and we, but we showed like the harm of vaping and tobacco use on lungs and everything. We've advocated for tobacco-free parks. We had a breakfast, a March breakfast. We had Lucy Joyce design on a billboard and stickers that we went around for our sticker shock, and it said, "Thank you for keeping our youth alcohol-free." And we put those in different stores and everything. We partnered up with Denny Jacks for that in three of the stores. We had a fall planning retreat. We selected, selected Preventing Youth Retail Access to Vape Products. We compiled quit kits. We just did that a couple of weeks ago, I think, and we will be putting those around our school. So then people, if they're interested in quitting, they can go and pick those up, and it's anonymous. People don't have to know, just so they don't have to feel embarrassed or anything about that. We've gone to social media to educate and provide information. We have TVs on our building that will be putting up ads and, not really ads, but just information and how to quit and Q R codes so then they can get to the quit kits. And so that's all the things that we've accomplished in now this year. We've had a little planning retreat, and it was on a Friday off. So people who are really interested came on their day off of school on a Friday, and we talked about all the different ways that we can focus on retail access to tobacco products and how we can prevent youth from that. And we have different ways. Did you pass out the handouts?
I did.
So we came down to seven different ways to prevent that. So.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kate Waterfall. I'm a junior and I'm also a Youth for Change leader. And I join Youth for Change because I've been blessed with a positive, healthy family environment and have benefited because of that academically and just in all areas of my life. And so I want more kids to have that experience with a childhood free of alcohol, drugs, and other addictions. So Youth for Change has been really interesting, and we've done really cool things. As you can see, we partnered with ITSCA as much as possible. I wish we could do more, but it's just kind of tricky with timing of stuff. And then this is Lucy, and her sticker that we put in the gas stations that we had permission to, so that was a really cool, positive, positive encouragement. And we just want to talk about Youth for Change a little bit. It's a really awesome club. We had over forty kids sign up for it this year, which is crazy. Like last year, we probably had half that many, so it's definitely growing. It's been rough with club scheduling. We haven't had too many people come as much as we want to, but kids still show up at seven fifteen in the morning to give us ideas of how we can reduce vaping and alcohol in our school. And it's really powerful to like see kids coming early in the morning. They're really not going to get anything out of it for themselves, but just to help other people and their friends. So yeah, that's kind of about Youth for Change. Does anyone have any questions for us?
When do you hold your meetings, like a day and how many times during the month?
So last year, we did it after school, but this year, I mean, not after school, their homework. But then this year, we've been doing it Wednesdays at seven fifteen every other week.
Kate, can, can you say what's in the kits that you offer?
Yeah, so. Do you remember? We have gum, candy.
There's little notebooks so then they can, it's like a little diary, somebody they can talk to. There's different planning on how to quit. There's a little brochure in there that gives them information. But just a lot of little fun, not fun stuff, but stuff to help them quit. There's, you know, like she said, some candy and.
There's Chapstick.
Gum. Oh, Chapstick as well.
Yeah.
So.
We use kind of like a template that was like recommended by like a high, I don't know, a good source. I don't know. Yeah.
Do you have a rubber band in the kit?
No.
Have you ever heard the theory that apparently you're to snap yourself each time you have a negative craving or thought?
Yeah, we can untie those, that's a good idea. Any other questions? So basically, the, replying to the grant is like really important for us because it will help. Fun, Betsy, help. It will help like keep the leadership of it going from the adult side and also the part of prevention, which we work with a lot, especially as leaders. So yeah, I'm super excited to see our company grow and have an impact on the school community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Time to four E, Richland Center Primary School.
So just a quick update from each of our building principals. The next three agenda items, just to kind of give the board and the community some, some updates on what's going on in the individual buildings.
Are we okay doing it from the spot? Good evening. At the primary school, I am Amy Hardy, and the principal at the primary school. And so when we started to go for this school year, we had focused on many things preparing for the year. We've worked really hard on having the primary school embrace the Hornet Way, which we also tied into Love and Logic, working with Paul Gasser and Greg Zimmerman this year. So our students have really learned the language of above the line and below the line and bottom line. So most of our students, if you, I would say ninety-nine percent of them, if you say, "Is that above the line choice or below the line?", they'll either do or. But they've really embraced that well. As part of our social emotional learning, we also started to produce weekly videos that our students see, part of the S E L in the classroom, so the teachers watch those videos. It has cut down a little bit on the morning announcements, which I normally have and continue to have, but they're not quite as lengthy. But they're in video, and Mrs. Iverson teams with me, she does most of those. But again, getting out things that are applicable, whether in social skills or in reminders and expectations of our school and how focused on being respectful, responsible, safe and a friend, as well as filling one another's buckets. That's important. And so those have been some really big pushes as we started off the year. A few of the videos have also been shared out with our families and our newsletters. We are continuing to move forward with iReady. So that's a tool that our district has now been using for a couple of years. This is our second year, I believe, with kindergarten up. So that continues to be a tool that we use with our students as well as a way to take a look at data. And we look at data every six weeks with our grade level teams in addition to continually getting, having those conversations of how are students doing, how are they performing? Because while that data is very important, it is also only a piece of their world and how their performance is, simply because some students might not feel the best on the day that we do an assessment like that, or some just aren't good test takers, or some are really click happy, right? You know, they're waiting for recess and they're really excited, or they're hungry, or whatever other thing might be going on. But when we do look at data, that is important for us all to remember. As this group before talked about, homecoming was a success. Student Council had talked about that. Our students loved having the high schoolers come on down special for that day and having Homer come visit. That's just like the wonderful thing that everybody wants to touch Homer. Then academically, we also this year are doing piloting of our reading and our E L A as well as our math. So we have two different pilots for E L A reading and two different pilots of math plus our regular that we've been using for a few years with Journeys and Math Expressions. So there's a lot happening in our elementary schools in regards to taking a look at our curriculum and digging deep. If you check out our school, we have some new spinners. Most people refer to them as spinners. Some refer to them as flower pots, and some refer to them, quite frankly, as bonded buckets. And after the first week, we didn't have any queasy paths. So that has subsided in the lineup, so some students have decided they really love it for their balance and their place in space. That's truly why we got it. And so we have four new spinners on our playground. And then we also have a climbing wall in our gym. So those of you that maybe haven't had a chance to see that, that was in full use that very first week. Once it was up, Mrs. Swigum rolled out a lesson on using that climbing wall, and it was pretty awesome to watch our kiddos on it moving about. Fire Prevention Week, we welcomed our local fire department. They came in and talked with our students about fire safety. This is an annual event that we do, as well as the smokehouse comes, and our students go through there, and it gives them a sense of what does it feel like? How, what can you see when there is a house with smoke in it? And they literally crawl out the back of it. Again, if that's not something you've seen before, let me know. I'd be happy to have you come join us next year. But that is something we do every year with our students, just to have that awareness. As far as for our students' overall wellbeing, we also did, the district did, the students' flu clinic. So for any of our families who wanted their students to get the flu shots and vaccines, they were able to do that right through school. That's wonderful to be able to provide, especially with so many parents busy. That's hard to sometimes get those appointments, and sometimes it's hard to get, you know, those appointments. So that's a nice way to help accommodate our families. Speaking of families, we had parent-teacher conferences. I stress to our families in some of our new, in a number of our newsletters that parent connections within the school shouldn't only happen twice a year at parent-teacher conferences. It should be ongoing, whether in a phone call, in an email to connect and schedule, but especially at parent-teacher conferences. It's nice because everyone kind of expects that time block. You know, I expect I'll get a call, especially in the lower elementary, you know, to get an idea for what is my child's world like and helping to make those connections. P T O is another great way for connections to be happening. We're moving into our third event. We had the trick-or-treating. We had Lego Night last month, and then we'll be, in November. And then as we move into December, we'll be doing gingerbread house making. That's a have-to. And then that's on December eighth, if you want to come do that, from six to seven thirty in our gym, in our cafeteria. And then on the ninth, if you go through Rotary Lights, you'll see faces from primary school that are hosting that night, again, through P T O. Welcoming volunteers all the time. We've had, I think, a little over twenty-five high school aides that joined us in first quarter as well as second quarter. So we are thrilled to have the high school students join us in our building. That continues to be a win-win, I think, for everyone. And so it's something our students look forward to. It provides some one-on-one with some of our students, having a special person to read to or review some of their math facts with, or whatever pieces of their world might be beneficial to help fill a gap. That has really been a huge plus, and I'm thankful that's something that came out of our COVID time and I think has been a real benefit, and hopefully will continue for many times to come. Additionally, we have volunteers from the community that continue to come in. Some have been with us for a few years. Some are still fairly new to us. But if folks in the community are interested, or you know of people that think, you know, it might be fun to play with the littles, or to come on in and read with a little, or to spend time, or really think it'd be awesome to do bulletin boards. I'm guessing we can find them the right match. So volunteers are welcome. Substitutes are always needed to help join our team. We're very fortunate for the people, again, that we do have come in, but it continues to be a need in our district. And then accolades to all of our staff in the primary school for their time and effort in preparing for this school year. It seemed to come on fast. Every year, we think we've got enough time, right, to make it, we'll have enough, we'll have enough. And then it's like, whoa, the hustle gets on and it's time to go. So it's, it's an amazing spot at the primary school where we strive for our students to feel safe, to feel comfortable, to be ready to learn and have fun. But that safety is really a huge piece of that because without them feeling that and having their basic needs met, the learning and the fun isn't going to happen. And so that's something we continue to strive for. That's a lot, so questions you might have. And again, you're all welcome to come visit anytime. But any questions you may have? Thank you.
Thank you. Four F.
Four F, the Richland Center Intermediate School.
I always like to joke that I was good at all, so it's like, what can I always say? It might be a little bit different. I'm sure what you're going to hear from also high school too, and what we also heard from Amy, at the intermediate school, you know, those first couple of weeks was a lot of welcome back, getting our students into those routines. You know, when you come into our building, we changed things up a little bit this year. Our third graders were no longer just with one teacher all day. They started to rotate between all of the teachers, so we have one that teaches reading, writing, math, and then social studies and science. So that was very new for our third graders. But it's been wonderful to see how they have been adapting, and a lot of them are really liking to have that movement and meeting different teachers. And also has been really nice because it ties right into our connections, which is our number one goal for our district, is creating those connections with our staff. So again, back to that first week, once we got our third graders adjusted to all the newness, similar to what Ms. Hardy was saying, we were talking about above and below line expectations. And we continue to work with our students in those various places within our building of what is above the line, what is below the line, what can we do to make things better. Thankfully, we haven't had two bottom, way below there. We haven't had to worry about that much of that, which is great to have at RCIS. Along with that is just making sure that our teachers are posting those expectations in their classrooms, so that students not only see them, but they also hear them. So that's been something we've been trying to work on with all of our staff, of making sure that everybody is aware of what those expectations are. As we continued on throughout those first couple of weeks, we had Brian Kenny come in to do some team building, leadership skills, problem solving with our students, and he'll be in now two more times, he's come in twice, to work with our students. So about thirty to thirty-two kids, their homeroom teachers and other staff all partake with him to do various activities. And then throughout the quarter, teachers are to go back and talk about those activities they did with their homeroom and reference those activities when situations come up, positive or negative, to again tie in that building a sense of community and that culture of, you know, you might not always like everybody, but how can we learn to respect everybody? That's definitely a big statement that I've been, or a statement I've been using a lot this year with our students, is just in this place, you know, when you leave our building, we want to make sure that you are a good person. You know, those academics are important, but we need you to have those skills to respect people and how to get along. So we're really trying to focus on that. A couple other things, you know, we had homecoming week, that's always a fun time. You know, our students definitely like to participate in their dress-up days. We continued on with diagnostic testing, similar with the iReady. So we've done now our fall and our growth check, or January will come our fall, or winter testing as well. So our students, making sure that they understand the importance of that and trying to celebrate those many achievements and growing, you know, it's a big thing of being in a school, is just growing. And whether it's a little bit or a lot, we want to make sure to celebrate and recognize students as they're growing. October was a very big month. We had our bullying awareness month, and so Ms. Sliker, our school counselor, along with Jessica Brown from Passages, came in to do lessons with our students, and then I would also kind of jump in at times as well. Throughout that, Jessica did have a job transition, so I kind of had to help with some of that, but that was really fun to see our students using the three Rs, refuse, report, and I can't think of the last one right now, of course, imagine that. But our students are really using those, that language with their peers, and we've seen in the hallways or outside at recess, we see students using it. And so it's great because they're coming, they're taking that away and now applying it to their real-life situations that they're in. So that's been another fun thing to see our students grow and learn. We also celebrated red ribbon, red ribbon week as well, so again, tying into healthy choices. At RCIS, we have one hive, H-I-V-E. Healthy choices is quarter one, integrity is quarter two, values quarter three, and empathy is quarter four. So we really tried to tie in different activities with those healthy choices, with bullying and red ribbon week, to make sure that we're letting students know that healthy choices just isn't going out and exercising or eating a salad for lunch. It's, you know, how do we physically and mentally make sure that we're okay and the choices that we make are okay? We then kicked off November with integrity. So Brian Kenny came back in, and then I actually took the day and spent with students doing a lesson on integrity and what does integrity mean, what does it look like in completing an activity with them. I tried to do this once a quarter, opposite of Brian Kenny, just to have a time when I'm not in my office, I'm actually out with the students, and so that's always kind of fun. This year we did hands, that'll be going up in our classrooms of how do they show integrity? And so we'll continue to work with that as second quarter continues. Few other things, we've had our hive time reading, so two days a week. Our students are dropping everything in reading for fifteen minutes. That's during our hive time, our homeroom. Along with that, we are providing topics for different SEL-type activities that we've done, tying into Brian Kenny, the things that I have done, or maybe what they're talking about in their guidance class. So doing all of that, along with that, we've had sting after school, which has been well-received, and so I know also at the primary too, we are very thankful for those people that are helping with that program and the kids that are participating. It's great to see them have those opportunities as well. We also have the opportunity for Veterans Day, which was another fantastic day to not only celebrate our veterans, but we also have the opportunity to come up here and watch the high school Cinderella performance. And so that was another great opportunity for some of our kids who maybe don't get to go and see theatrical performances to coappear and support them. Other than that, you know, piloting, we're doing the new curriculum, lots are going on in our classrooms, and so it's always something different and busy at the intermediate school. The best thing is, is that as of last week, Monday, I am finally at full staff. And so that means it's not making phone calls to subs to see if they can come in, but I am very thankful for the subs that we have had that have come in, or those that have taken maybe a longer-term placement to help us out, because without them, we wouldn't be able to continue on with what we're doing. So I want to say thank you to all of our subs and then also all of our teachers for stepping in when we may have been short, because it's not easy to do what they already have to do and then to also go help somewhere else. It's a hopping place, but please stop in and visit at any time. If I'm not in my office, don't worry, Jane and JD will track me down, usually in the hallway or the lunchroom or somewhere, but please stop on in. Any questions?
Thank you. To four G, the Richland Center High School.
So we're super excited to share how the start of the school year has gone. We're both settling into our new role and we're logging it. We're doing a good job, I think, of communicating and just divvying what, what needs to be done and sharing that. We've visited some other schools this school year and last school year to get some ideas. A couple of things that we saw, the screens in the hallway, just a great communication tool for our teachers and our students. We have them throughout the building. We can update them with new schedules of the week, where they can check out Chromebooks, what's going on, what meetings are happening, what's for lunch, just some of those tools have been great for communication. We also saw there's a lot of flexible seating in other schools, so we brought some benches in our hallway and are supposed to get some more, but it's just a nice addition for our staff and our students. We'll see staff out there in the mornings, greeting students, talking with each other, just giving them a place to land and be present. And then just some flexible seating in our lunch areas too, some tall tables, we saw that in other districts, just to make the school feel more a place they want to be and a place that they're comfortable. Just those small things have made a big difference. We have welcomed several new staff this school year, and everybody kind of touched upon homecoming, but one thing that we noticed right away is our new staff, we're, we're joining the powder puff teams, they were joining the volleyball teams. You don't always see that with new staff, but they were jumping in and wanting to get the new students to know who they were. So we're just super proud that they felt comfortable right away in the month of September to be a part of our school and, you know, that people sought them out to be part of those teams and they just hadn't stood along the sidelines. That was great to see. The homecoming week was a positive experience. We were super excited at the end of Saturday, that the, the dance was great, the prays were great, the activities throughout the whole week were just wonderful, so no issues there. One thing we were wanting to touch upon tonight is Hornet Hour. So we have Hornet Hour before fourth block every day. We used to have homeroom at the end of the day, but we kind of wanted to clean up the schedule, so we put it before fourth block. Three days a week, students can be didst by their teacher. So if they're struggling in a class, or the teacher just needs to see them to catch them up on a test or catch them up on assignment, they go in on a Google Doc that all the staff can see and say, I want to see the student Hornet Hour on this day to get them caught up. That has been great. One day a week, we do Read Across the Hive, so if you stop here during that time, it'll be super quiet. District office staff is out on the benches in the hallway, we are out reading a book of our choice and just modeling how important it is to take that time to continue to learn and read. And I feel like they're just really getting in that routine and all the expectation. So we're very happy about that. And then one day a week, our school counselor, Miranda Culver, sends out social emotional learning lessons that we do on Fridays, and the staff is doing that. The gals that spoke for partnership prevention, they were kind of eyeing me up because they want this club time, and we're hearing them. So we, I wish they were still here, but in December, we're going to try to incorporate some of that time on those Fridays to maybe alternate the social emotional learning lesson, because being part of a club is part of your social emotional health. So I think they'll be excited to know that come December, we're going to get some of that time during the day so that more kids can be involved in the clubs and not just relying on the before and after-school time. Lastly, I'll share the, we've welcomed Jared Wilson into our student services area. His office is backed by our counselors and our school nurse, and he is visible during the lunchtime, during passing time, and I'm noticing students will ask where he's at. You know, they might just have a question, or they're just starting to get to know who he is and seeking him out some, so they'll go back there and just talk with him and ask him even about his career, you know, just to learn more about that. So he's been a great resource for us. He's also visible during busing times at the end of the day, when kids are switching up here, the buses and small children are, are running to get on a different bus. He's just out there and visible when it's a busy time.
Nope, just like Liz says, he's, he's had a great, great, he's done a great job up here so far. It's been a pleasure to get to know him, and for our students to see a positive member of, or a law enforcement in a positive light, it's been fantastic. So nothing positive, we have nothing positive to say about Officer Wilson. Couple other things that I'm going to touch on is our teacher leader coaching program that began at the start of school year. It's off to, it's off and running, they've been doing a great job getting in classrooms, observing, offering support for the rest of their departments and other departments. They've been very flexible in kind of switching things up. Maybe they have a, a member of department hasn't been able to get in to one of their people that's in their department, they've been great about switching around so somebody in the teacher leaders can get in there and observe those lessons. Our middle school incentive program is something that Mr. Bosworth started last year. It, it's been, it's been fantastic. Essentially, it's once a quarter, we try to do something for seventh and eighth graders as an incentivized day. So in order to be, to be able to qualify for the incentive program, you have to have C minuses or above in all your classes and three or fewer discipline referrals in order to participate in that event. This, this year for first quarter, we always start a little bit low-key and it builds up and gets to a very exciting trip at the end. But first quarter, we had a day of, or an afternoon of kickball activities, concession stands, music outside where the students were able to just socialize and hang out, play kickball, and participate in some of those positive social emotional skills out there in the supervised environment, so it went off great. We had students constantly coming in to check with Ms. Perkins, with Submi and I, and asking, how many discipline referrals do I have? Which is great, that's what we want them to be aware of, how many they have, and hopefully they answer zero, but they're keeping tabs on themselves so they can participate in those events. The musical went fantastic, Cinderella was performed, and Ms. Brown talked a little bit. Other, other schools had an opportunity to come up here and watch the performance. I congratulate all our students and staff that performed in that. It was, it was a great event for everyone and the community. And then student council was in here speaking a little bit earlier, they're organizing a blood drive that's happening this Thursday, so that'll be, it's a big event for them. I think they run it usually twice a year, so the blood, Red Cross comes in and has a blood drive in the gym that day, so that should be a great event. Just to kind of talk about what Ms. Perkins said at the beginning, we're, we're very, very happy to be the co-principals of the building. We're learning every single day, we're constantly striving to be better, so we know we have some things to work on, but we both love our jobs. We love, love coming to work, and we're truthfully enjoying being leaders of the high school.
All right, thank you for all the reports. Onto the minutes. Is there a motion to approve prior meeting minutes of November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three? So move. Motion by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second, Mrs. Wirths, discussion.
Aye.
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 Sting.
Aye.
Aye. Seven five B, is there a motion to approve prior meeting minutes of September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three? So move. Motion by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dowdna, discussion. Ms. Oxel.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Sting.
Aye.
Aye.
To agenda item six, financial items, six A, approval of statement of cash.
I move we approve the statement of cash dated November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion was made by Mr. Dowdna, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dickman, Mr. Board, anything you'd like to add?
I would add for Mr. Bosworth, we did have to transfer nine hundred thousand dollars from our local government investment pool to Community First Bank for general operating expenses and payroll a few days before the twenty-fifth, so the twenty-second I believe was.
Discussion. Mr. Dowdna?
Aye.
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 All right, six B, approval of invoices.
I move we approve Community First Bank general check and account checks number eight five seven nine five through number eight five eight one eight, ACH number two three two four zero zero five five three through two three two four zero zero five nine seven, and EFT number two zero two three zero 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 three one through two zero two three zero zero three seven, for a net total of one hundred ninety-nine thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion was made by Mr. Dowdna, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Hunter, discussion. Mr. Hunter.
Aye.
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 All right, on to agenda item seven, consent agenda items.
Before I have Ms. Steele announce the consent agenda items, I would add that seven E, the grant for the pupil services, the Stronger Connections Grant, did get pulled from consent, and that is now listed as ten D under action items.
Motion to accept the donation of the hornet hats at the Richland Center Primary School valued approximately one hundred and twenty-five dollars from Mary Greenwood and Jody Meeden per policy seventy-two thirty. Motion to accept the donation of school supplies at the Richland Center Primary School valued at approximately seventy dollars from Peace United Methodist Church Congreg- Congregation per policy seventy-two thirty. Motion to approve the Exelis Special Education Grant as presented, and motion to approve the budget transfers for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year as presented in accordance with the provisions of Wisconsin Statute sixty-five nine five A. This shall require at least two-thirds majority vote. That is it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wirth, second, Mr. Bailey.
I did have one question on the Exelis program. On the first part, it says seven hundred dollars per student, and then in the packet, I believe it said seven ninety-nine per student, so I just wanted to get some clarification on that.
Yep, Mr. Josam, you need to help, but I've got, the seven ninety-five is the allocated amount up to, and then right now the estimated cost per student is seven hundred. So we are within the allocated cost, so there would not be any anticipated impact to the district budget.
Okay.
Mr. Josam, is that accurate?
Yep.
Thank you.
Discussion, any more questions? Mrs. Dick.
Aye.
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 Aye. Is there a motion then to approve the modified agenda? So move. Motion made by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Ms. Troxel. Discussion. Mrs. Wertz?
Aye.
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 All right, on to agenda item, oop, I'm sure this. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the Greenwood and Meeden families and the Peace United Methodist Church for their generous donations. Onto agenda item nine, information and discussion items. Nine A, district, district transfers and vacancies.
Okay, so you do have the two PDFs for support staff and certified staff. We just have a few positions still open. We're looking for a couple of custodial positions in the support staff section. And then we do have the Richland Center High School, grade seven through twelve, school counselor position that is open as well. Any questions on transfers and vacancies?
With the posting from the school, school counselor, is there an end date to that posting or is it?
We posted it for the five days, which is our typical practice, and then reposted it until filled. So we just have it posted until we can find a quality person.
Thank you.
Nine B, school board member elections, spring two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, so just a few reminders and some notifications for our public as well. So we do have three board member seats up for election in April of two thousand twenty-four. Those three seats, you can see as historical, when everybody is up and when they were elected from two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and then bottom of that table of two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Bailey's position, which is Area Three, that's the city term, that is a full term now for three years. Mr. Bailey was appointed and then had to run for the remainder of the term. And now this is the full term. Mr. Dowdna's position is an at-large position. And Mrs. Wertz's position is outside of the city, Area One, which is to the east side of the school district. So if, if anybody out there is interested in running and they have specific questions about where they may qualify for, anybody would qualify for the at-large position. You have to be a member of the city to qualify for the city, and then you have to be a member of the area known as the Richland Center East section to qualify for that Area One spot. Some special dates that the board and public should be aware of. Candidates, incumbents, you should have gotten a folder from Laura Steele. If you did not see that folder, have misplaced it or need another one, please go to the district office for the information. If you are planning on running again, you don't need to do anything in December, but by January second, two thousand twenty-four, by the end of the day, district office will be open until five PM on that day. You would have to fill out a declaration of candidacy form. If you are not running, then the key date that you would need to know is December twenty-second. December twenty-second is the deadline for incumbents to file a notice of non-candidacy. We then submit a public notice to the local media on those who have filed that declaration of, excuse me, notice of non-candidacy, and then the incumbent will not be listed on the ballot. If it's after that day, then they do run the risk of being put on the ballot and even though they may not be running. If anybody in the public wants to run, again, if they need to know where, what area that they're in, they can contact district office. But anybody in the public that is running or just wanting to run or just wanting to know more information about what it entails, they should contact the district office, specifically Laura Steele, in the district office. We can answer any questions if they have. We can get them one of those folders that has all the information in it as to what they would need to know. And then they would have to return their declaration of candidacy by January second, two thousand twenty-four as well. Five PM would be the deadline. Again, district office will stay open until five PM on that day. Any questions from the board related to the upcoming spring election and board members?
Nine C, district priorities and goals.
Okay, so this is an agenda topic that will come to the board. The hope is once a month, you know, we only have one meeting in December, so I'm not exactly sure how it'll look over December, January, but I want to make sure that the board stays updated. It's on the Curriculum Assessment and Public Relations Committee every meeting that they have, just to make sure that everything stays on task, but to make sure that the board is aware and our public is aware on where we're at with each of these priorities and goals. So in going through each of the six goals that we have, under priority number one, where we're trying to make connections with students and addressing their mental health, the board has had established two goals. First is that every student feels comfortable talking to and reaching out to at least one adult staff member. I've mentioned this before, at the beginning of the school year, during end service, we had all of our staff do some student mapping to determine who they had strong connections with. And then early in the school year, we did the first of three student surveys where they were to get us information on which staff members they feel comfortable talking to about these sorts of things. And then right before Thanksgiving break, all of our staff members were got, received an email from me that didn't say their, their exact score, but basically gave them some high-level overview information of the results of that survey. Do at least eight students feel like they have a connection with you and they could, they could talk to you about something? And if they did, then they got a green checkmark. And many of our staff, many of our staff received these green checkmarks. The ones that didn't were probably the ones that were newer staff. Not always, but that was, that was certainly a trend that we saw. And then the second thing that they got information on was do at least fifty percent of the students in your building know who you are, right? And our goal is that all of our students know who all of our staff members are, but we also realize some of them just simply aren't as visible. So we thought fifty percent was a good baseline and they, again, got that information. We are going to be using that information as baseline data only. In January, we'll be sending out another survey our students will be taking and then again at the end of the year. And the hope is that over the course of these surveys, we meet this priority, right? That we have, find that all of our students have adults that they can have a connection with them. They can go talk to if there's something that they need to talk about other than academics. Of course, they're always welcome to talk about academics as well, but if they just need somebody to talk to, I have this situation going on, I don't know what to do, that they have people in the buildings that they can do that with. And we think that's going to be very valuable and also just to make our staff aware of how many people really know who they are. I got great information back, you know, I mean, just myself, I haven't been able to get to the primary and intermediate school buildings as frequently, and that reflected in the data that I got back. Students didn't necessarily know who I am, and so that gives me good information that I just need to be more visible. And I think that's true for all of our, all of our staff members. Second goal under that priority was to ensure that every student had at least one good friend. And so again, in the student information, we asked the questions. Do you have a friend in your building? Do you have a friend outside of your building? And do you have a friend in the community? Yes or no questions. And we then identified students that don't have any friends or that stated that they didn't have any friends in any of those three areas. And we immediately at the building level started finding ways to get connections with these students, either through the adults or placing them in peer groups without them necessarily even knowing that this happened, so that we can start to identify those connections or lack of connections in those, in those areas. Again, we're planning on doing the same survey in January. Hopefully those numbers improve as well and by the end of the year, that we can truly say that every student has a staff member that they feel comfortable talking with and that every student has a friend. So we're well on our way in priority one and very optimistic about the initial data that we got, but it is just baseline data at this point. We do have a lot of students coming and going and we want to make sure that students who are new to our district also don't fall between tracks, right? That we, that we stay on top of this and that they also have good connections and staff members that they can talk to. Maybe before I go to priority number two, any questions on priority number one and those two specific goals where we're at with them that I can answer for the board?
I have one. I know that staff members, I believe, are mandatory reporters. If there was a student who had very sensitive, private information, is there one individual or one department that would be safer for them to be able to confide fully?
Well, we are all mandatory reporters, and so if there is information that is required by law to be reported, this would be the cases of abuse, right? And there is no confidentiality there. We have to report it to the, to the next authorities, right? If that's the case, or social services, whatever it might be. Now, that's all the further it goes, right? In terms of confidentiality, we don't, we don't tell our whole staff, we don't do those kinds of things, but we are mandatory reporters and would have to report it to the appropriate services. Okay, seen none. Moving on to priority number two. So this was the recruiting and retention of high-quality staff. And our two goals were to ensure that every staff member has a sense of community as well as our second goal to define what high-quality staff means. So the first goal, we're right in the middle of, and this, we'll be getting some data here soon. If you remember last year, right before the holidays, we sent out, using the school perception survey, we sent out a survey to all of our staff to gather a lot of information. Last year, that would have been baseline data. We're hoping to see some significant trends in the overall survey that comes back that staff will take here before the Christmas break. In regards to ensuring that every staff member has a sense of community, in that survey, we have identified a handful of questions that we will be tacking on to that survey. And so we will then get better information from our staff on where they're at with a sense of community. Do they have peers in the, in the community or in the, in the school community? Do they have friends? Do they associate with? What kind of things do they have? And then that will help guide our next steps in that. So that will be going on. Our staff will be getting that survey in December. It'll be the same survey that we did last year with these additional questions tacked on. And then the second part is the defining of what high-quality staff means. We have an ad hoc committee that has been developed. It's, there are myself, Dr. Johnson, Christie Zimmerman, Birch Zimmerman, Megan Clerkin, Mark Noble, Heather Krug and Carol Hillashima, the seven of us. Did I get everybody, Sherry? Okay. The seven of us have been meeting. We've met three or four times now and are very, very close to unveiling a draft definition of what constitutes high-quality staff. We have targeted eight different components that we think that rock stars in our district do these eight things and do them well, right? And then we're hoping that in early December, we'll be able to get some feedback from our staff. Do they agree with it? Is there wording that needs to be tweaked so that we can come back to the board, ideally in January, and have a true definition of what high-quality staff means and that the board can even potentially take action on that? So again, we don't have the action steps, but they are, are very, very close, both of those, to having some good concrete data for our staff. Any questions on that priority? Okay. And then finally, priority number three is to get our students' college and career ready. And our two goals were to follow up with two hundred and fifty past graduates, recent graduates, to understand how they felt that their time at Richland Center affected their post, secondary experiences, whether they went on to college, entered the workforce or did something else. And the second goal was to work with the community to define the career-ready and employability skills. I'll be the first to say that that last goal is the furthest behind in terms of where we're at making progress. There was a survey that was done a couple of years ago and we're going to use that as a starting point, but we just have not made significant progress in that. That's one of the next things that we need to do. The other goal, following up with two hundred and fifty past graduates, I think I informed the board, certainly the committee, that we had a forum out there that we were trying to collect student emails and contact information from recent grads because we don't have a lot of that information. We had their school emails, right? But those are no longer valid. So we've sent this out, we put it on social media, we've sent things home, it's on our district website, but as of about three-thirty today, we had one person respond, okay? So we are looking for two hundred and forty-nine more people to say that they are willing to assist the district in, you know, trying to, to figure out if we're meeting the needs of those graduates. So a plea to the public, hop on the district website, a plea to our, our staff and the board members, encourage people, hop on the district website. This, that survey right there that they click on is purely information gathering. What year did you graduate? What was your name? What is your name now? What is your name when you graduated, if it's different? And what's the best contact information? And then we will send out a survey. Once they give us that information, we'll check it, you know, every few days or certainly weekly, and then send out this big survey so that we can start to gather some information. But at this point, we just don't even have addresses to send them the survey. So we'll make another push here in between the holidays, hoping people will be back for the Christmas break more than they will Thanksgiving break. But if anybody has any other thoughts on how we can get that information out there, I'd be, I'd love to hear that at some point, so. Any questions on priority three? Certainly the one we've made the least progress on, but it was our third priority, we started at the top, so.
Is there still like a point person from each class, like class president or something like that? Because I do feel like once you move on, you know, that's still the point person for your class reunions and all of that, that they have better luck?
I believe so, but I don't know who those people are.
Okay.
And if somebody knows, is there a common practice that it's always the class president for the first five years? And then I don't know the answer to that. Or does somebody just kind of take the initiative to do it? I don't know.
Are the actual survey responses anonymous or is it tied directly to each individual that replies?
Well, the initial, you know, contact information is, but the, but the other one, they can do it either way, right? They can, they can choose to put their name in there or they can just give us the information.
I kind of agree with Melissa though, is that if you contact the class officers and maybe put them in charge of it, usually most of those classes have Facebook pages that they can get the word out.
They just get the word out.
Yeah. Because when you're younger, they're still communicating. When you get older, you kind of lose that, but that's, I would, I would definitely.
We will try that. Appreciate that. What we're doing certainly isn't working well. So that's where we're at, at this point in time. Okay, thank you.
Nine D, the first quarter disciplinary report information, twenty-three, twenty-four.
I would ask the board to postpone this to the December eleventh meeting. I'll take full accountability for it. I had this great idea to, you know, set this up to import all of our data from Skyward and it seemed to be working pretty well until I realized that, that data reported that we had two hundred and ninety-six students hit another student and that was not accurate data. So I have to do some troubleshooting on the importation and so I would ask that we postpone this to, to another meeting. I think it's going to run to take action on it.
No action, I think so. Good with that, I assume?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, nine E, high school under-enrolled classes for quarter two, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, so I don't know, a month, a couple months ago, the board has, had, saw the quarter one undersized classes, so policy twenty-three, twelve are class size policy. And we'll actually talk about that in our next agenda item as well. Part of that policy states that those middle school and high school sections that have fewer than ten students in them should be reviewed by the board. And so this is the opportunity for the board to review it. These are the quarter two courses. You know, some of them are special education courses, some of them are just electives. That information is there. And I would ask our high school administration, do you have anything to add that you want to point out regarding this?
I think just to try and I see, a lot of it are seventh and eighth grade and we, I think the board wanted our seventh and eighth grade to have the opportunity to try lots of different things. So just So just the way that their schedule falls, that reflects, I think, the size. We want them to try tech ed. We want them to try business. We want them to try yearbook. So they can often make the class sizes smaller if they're trying different things. And the way it falls with other electives are competing. Another trend I saw was just some of those higher-level classes. Where not all students will try a higher-level Spanish if they don't need to, or even an AP Calc. So just looking at those two things is what the majority of this is. Anything to add to that?
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions from the board for myself or high school admin?
So you have the Spanish 3A. I'll assume there's a Spanish 3B section as well?
Yeah, that'll be coming later.
Is that, is there not?
So typically, those students will take the next section when it's in the grid in a different quarter.
Yep, it'll either fall third or fourth quarter. I don't know what's up ahead, but third or fourth quarter, likely those same five, they all stick with it. We'll write in that. So you'll likely see during third or fourth quarter, Spanish 3B on this list.
Okay. So right now, there's only five total students in Spanish 3? Thank you.
It would be rare, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be rare for us to add a student to, to the second part of Spanish 3, second semester, or correct?
If they haven't taken the first half, yes.
Any other questions? All right, on to nine F, review of 202324 class and course sizes.
All right, so I'll introduce this, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Johnson while she's handing out some information. So again, policy 2312, which is our class size policy. And if you click on the link, that policy does pop up here. The, the board has established some general guidelines for where we are trying to strive for a number in terms of student-teacher ratios. Our high school, we have 21 to 24 students per teacher. Middle school, which is seventh, eighth grade, 18 to 21. And then elementary, grades four and five, 18 to 21. And then elementary, the lower levels, 15 to 18. So these are general guidelines. But then the policy also says that in November, the board shall review the actual class sizes and course sizes. And that's what you're reviewing here today. This has gone to curriculum as well. And Dr. Johnson, I think I'll just turn it over to you.
Sure. I did update, so this did go to curriculum in October. And so I did update some of the numbers. So, please, I'm handing out the big grid again. I know there's one linked in your book. I updated it today, just so we have live numbers. So you have a little bit more of a realistic vision and view of how many are in. This is first quarter. So to show you how this works, those of you who haven't seen the big grid, this is only half of the big grid. This is first quarter, one. It's first quarter, the first nine weeks, or sema, it's truly a semester. And this is the second one, the one we're currently in. So this is the one that you'd be looking at for right now, that, that the students are in. And then you'll see along the left side is all the teachers' names. Along the bottom, I did note, I did not update those. I, I wasn't in the right spot in Skyward, didn't have time to complete it. But you'll see in there, YA is youth apprenticeship. So that's telling you how many students are attending in youth apprenticeship and in what areas. And then if you see aides, that's when students from the high school go down and help in other buildings, or help somewhere else in this building. And then along the left side, you'll see the, the high school caseloads. On the memo, that's actually in your board book besides this one, it shows you the caseloads of our teachers and classroom sizes of our teachers in all the grade levels. And I updated this too since our October meeting. I'm sure there's something I missed, but I wanted you to have a realistic and true view of what our numbers are looking like. Does anybody have any questions? That's pretty straightforward. There's really no, nothing to truly point out. I did see that, like, as I was going through some of the numbers in the middle school, high school classes, that some of those are leveling off a little bit. You'll see that sections that may have two different, like, if there's like a science seven, and there's two of them, a few of them got a little closer to being equal. Instead of having a class of 30 and another one of 15, we're a little closer to 24 and 17. So that, that way, there's not quite so many in each room.
Were the colors of significance?
Yes, they are by, usually by grade level or year. Not concrete for those grades, but that gives you a, if you're thinking, okay, I want to look and see, I'm a seventh grader who has third block open, bang! You gotta look at, for that color for seventh grade, and it kind of helps you truly look at and see what's open.
In the case of our total students in second grade, it appears all four teachers have a sizable classroom. With the amount of aides, as Mrs. Hardy pointed out, that participate at that school, do you tend to try to pair together more aides when you have larger class sizes like this?
Conceivably, you would think that that might be how it goes. But truly, a lot of our aides are with our students that have special needs. Am I misspeaking this?
No, that's absolutely true.
Sure.
Does a aide have a choice as to what class they may be wanting?
Supporting.
Yeah, correct.
No. I mean, that sounds really blunt. But truly, when they're hired, they're hired for a purpose. And that's normally a group of students or a student that they're hired and liked.
The only true classroom needs we have, Mrs. Hardy, would be at the EC and 4K levels, correct? And then other aides would be cross-cat, special education aides, and support students in that fashion.
And even those, I mean, early childhood aides, Mr. Johnson, if I'm wrong, correct me, but they're hired specifically for the early childhood classrooms?
Correct. But in terms of, like, we don't have first-grade classroom aides.
No, not at all.
If there's an aide that's in a first-grade classroom, it's because of students' needs, those supports, not the classroom size.
And in case I misspoke, I was referring to the high school students who aid.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Are they?
That's totally different. You are correct. Actually, that's on placement also, correct? When, when a high school student is placed, that it's, they can request, the teacher can request, the students can request. But if the, the periods and the timelines don't line up, like if a, I'm, I'm guessing here, but if a teacher has a prep time at the same time that a student has an opening here at the high school, they likely won't get, be ma, be matched up because there won't be students to support. I mean, it can happen, but if not, you likely want the students to experience other students.
And I was just kind of stuck on that second grade level, since all four of them have three to four more students per, that it would make logical sense if, hey, let's get a couple seniors down there. But, thank you.
Yes, that's a great point. Thank you.
Oh, hold on. Can I backtrack for a moment? Is that okay? Because I thought you were talking about aides, like, I didn't realize you meant high school aides.
Yeah, like these aides.
Okay. So yes, students can request if they've been in a room before, and they want to request being with that grade level or with that teacher. But a lot does have to do with placement within their schedule. Sorry, just needed to clarify. I was not understanding aides.
Are there any, you know, this is a lot of information to try to digest. Are there any specific pain points or areas that need specific focus to help address, whether it's a correction or supports, or either super small class or super heavy class that needs work on?
Normally, what, I mean, as we move forward with our scheduling for the, for the future, if you're talking about the big grid, I'll, I'll address these a little separately because they're different issues, but similar. A lot of times, you consider building, or on classroom size. We've had some classrooms, because of large numbers, who've had to transfer or switch with a teacher. Teachers have been amazing about doing that. But truly, you can't fit 30 kids in a classroom and for 20 sometimes. Depends on what they're doing. Depends on your furniture, too. So that's something you consider. You consider content area many times. As you see, our science went down a person, you know, last year. That was something we've said to do. And so then that impacted some of the class sizes. And lab sciences are a little rough to run over 20, you know, closer to 30. So those are some things we consider. Staff newness to education or to working with children. You know, those are some of the things we, we think about. As far as if you're referring to, like, when you bring up second grade, we, we look at class sizes as we talk about those five positions coming forward, you know, when we talk about our budget. You know, that's something we want to look at. How many students are in these grade levels? And how are the class sizes impacting that? Those are some of the things on my mind when we talk about class sizes.
Thank you. If you look, compare what our policy guidelines say as it relates to that. So our, our 4K kindergarten, first grade, they're all right into that, between 15 and 18 students. Grade two is one higher than that. Our guidelines are 15 to 18. So they would be just one student beyond that is the guideline. And then when you look into the intermediate school, you know, our grades three, so through, it's 15 to 18. They're right there, you know, on, on the 14. But, you know, there's 16 and 17. And then fourth, fifth, and sixth, we're all looking at trying to have between 18 and 21. And all of those, none of them exceed 18. And that's the lowest over guidelines. So just comparing policy and guidelines to that, you know, for whatever's worth.
I have a question. So in the, in the intermediate school, do these, we're just seeing the homerooms. That way, I understand that they move around. Is that correct? And so do they move as a group? So that these 16 kids, that's still going to be 16 when they put the math, and 16 when they go to English?
Ms. Brown?
So our fourth grade, those numbers do stay the same as they do rotate by homeroom, as do third graders. Our fifth and sixth graders are mixed up. And actually, when I look into scheduling students, I do try to keep the classes fairly even. It might be a little skewed depending on our special ed needs and our ELL, or English language learners in fifth and sixth grade. So we might have a couple of classes that maybe only have, you know, 12 to 13, 14 for an ELA or a reading class. But that is because those students are being served in a different area. But I do try to keep them between that 15 to 17 range.
Thank you.
Any more questions from board members?
If something, I'm sorry, something pops up after you've looked at this a little while. So if this is your, if you're first time looking at this, please, so please reach out. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Right, nine G, referendum discussion?
Okay. So the board heard at our last meeting, a presentation from Nexus, Ellie Gilliam and Brian Millerly. Brian is, is here tonight and can answer the specific questions of, as far as potential next steps for this item and our action item on 10A, as well as the facility assessment. This agenda topic is on here because we really haven't had the opportunity at the board level to have a discussion around referendum. This is really the first, first time that it's discussed at this level. So before we start that discussion, I just want to point out a couple of things and just clarify for the board and/or our public that may be listening or tuning in and taped away, just a few things, okay? So one, this $9.12 mill rate has been, I've received a phone call from it, and if I've received one, there's probably many people who have thought about it. What is that mill rate? That's the school's portion of your property tax bill, okay? So every person who owns property in our district will have a property tax bill that they will get sometime in December. And they're typically made up of four components. The Richland School District comprises about 35% of that tax bill. The county is comprised of about 30% of the tax bill. The municipality that they're in, whether that be the city or the township, is about 30%. And then Southwest Tech is the remainder, okay? Every area, every, every school district in Southwest Wisconsin will pay a portion of the Southwest Tax School Bill. So the $9.12 is what the school district's portion of the tax levy is, okay? And we have stabilized that at $9.12, all right? Which means for every $1,000 worth of property that someone owns, they would pay $9.12 for the school district's portion, all right? Now, it is true that the school district could have lowered the tax rate and not kept it at $9.12. We did levy additional money, okay, through the use of defeasance. We made that commitment three years ago. We held true with it, and we've used that to prepay debts. Defeasance is prepaying of debt. Comes off of our books, and we pay off the bonds. And as I've mentioned before, that $8.2 million referendum that was passed in 2016, we weren't scheduled to make a, a single principal payment until the 25, 26 school year, all right? After this year, we'll cut that debt in half. We'll have saved about $500,000 in interest, and we will have knocked about five years off of that loan, okay? Off those bonds, technically. It's a loan for us. It's a bond for the school district. So that's what the $9.12 has done, all right? And then that, that amount of money that we have, now have as a, a gap, right? Between what it could be and what it is, the $9.12, that we're using to prepay debt, that money can be transferred over to a referendum, improved referendum by the stakeholders, okay? So when we're talking about no tax increase, as we, tax rate increase, as we get onto this discussion, it's based on that $9.12 mark, and it's based on using up that gap money, okay? From where it could be to the $9.12, all right? So hopefully, that, that clarifies that for the board and, and our constituents and stakeholders out there. So then with that, in the public content portion of your board book, there is a estimated referendum tax levy impact over the $9.12. This is very similar to what was shown at the committee levels. And it's, it's a grid because the, the board will ultimately consider two different types of referendum that they would have to ask in two separate referendum questions if it were to go. One would be an operational referendum, okay? Getting money for operational purposes in the form of year-over-year dollars, all right? That number has got some base hold numbers there, from 1 million to 1.5 to 2 to 2.5. That's in red across the top of that chart. And then the other question is capital improvements, okay? Borrowing money over the course of 20 years in the form of a bond, right? To fix things or to get things, right? Or to build things, right? We're talking about property. We're talking about tangible items here, okay? And there are various capital improvement numbers, just as kind of a starting point, of zero, 10 million, 20 million, 28 million, and 40 million down the left-hand side. So whenever you do more of one, that's less that you can do for the other for the same tax impact, okay? So they, they work in conjunction. That's why we have this grid here. So you can see, just if you look at the, the top left-hand portion of that grid, a $1 million operational referendum combined with a $10 million capital improvement creates no additional tax over the $9.12, okay? And that's why there's a zero there, all right? And then as you move down to the lower right-hand portion of that chart, you'll see numbers in green. Those would be numbers above and beyond the $9.12. So the extreme, $1.80 in the lower left-hand portion for 2.5 million in operation or 40 million in capital, that would be $1.80 onto our existing $9.12 or, you know, $10.92 per thousand, okay? So that's, that's how the mill rate and this chart will be used. Again, these are unofficial numbers. We're just filling in, filling in the graph, or the chart, to the best of our ability, all right? So what does the board need to consider? And what does the timeline look like? And what are the next steps before we, you know, so we can have this discussion? Well... Well, one of the things that the board needs to decide if we are going to referendum, that's first, are we going to go to referendum, right? And then if we do need to go to referendum, we need to decide where on the spectrum do we want to be? What questions do we want to ask on the ballot? If you look at that chart, the very top left-hand portion of the chart, the 1 million and zero, or the 1 million and 10, that upper left-hand portion of the chart, that is what I would call a short-term Band-Aid. It fixes some things and it gets us by a certain point in time, but that is not a long-term solution. This is a three, four, maybe five-year solution from an operational standpoint, and then depending on what we do capital-wise, if you did zero, if you're at the very top left-hand portion of that chart, you know, then that doesn't do anything to finish fixing the roof on the high school or our parking lots or hard surface areas or electrical upgrades or things that need to happen from an ADA standpoint. Does nothing to address that. That is truly a short-term solution on getting us by from an operational standpoint as we have this Esser cliff like so many, so many different school districts across the state have. The other extreme, the very bottom right-hand corner of that, of that chart, those are long-term solutions, okay? When you get over to the right-hand side of the chart, the $2.5 million operational, and certainly when you get down to the $40 million capital, those are choices that would put us in a position that we would be very stable and very well off from people, property, and programming for the next 10, perhaps 15 years, okay? So this would truly be a long-term solution. Anywhere in the middle, just adjust accordingly. The more, the more you go to the upper left-hand portion, the more you're saying this is a shorter-term solution, but it'll get us by for the number of years that you as a board member feel we need to get by as we examine. So then with that, one of the things that we'll be talking about later on tonight is a potential survey. So the general plan has been, let's, let's engage the public in what they are hoping for from their public school, right? What will they support? What will they support from a tax standpoint? What will they support from a what-to-do-with-the-money standpoint? And to send out a survey, and what we did, in 2020, we sent out a survey. The proposal this year is if we're going to take this route to have a professional third-party conduct this survey for us and give valuable information in December that then the board can look at in January to determine, okay, while I personally might believe that we should be here, the community is saying pretty loud and clear that we should be here, that's where we should focus our referendum around, right? And then by mid-January, it would be at our January 22 board meeting, State Boss says by January 24 that we would have to have a resolution or resolutions adopted to go on in April election. If we were looking at a November election, then those timelines would get pushed back a little bit. What are the pros and cons of the two different dates, okay? Well, if we do an April election referendum, that's the route that the board wants to go, and the community shows some support for that, then we would know our financial situation before budgets are finalized for the 24, 25 school year. We would know exactly what we are going to be dealing with and what we would have for additional revenue as we make staffing decisions and compensation decisions and those kinds of things. In addition to being able to start the planning process for any capital projects that summer, regardless, any construction or renovation would probably not happen until the following, until the following summer. Maybe we could get some roofing and some of that stuff done next summer if we went in April. If you wait until November, then you're dealing with what is likely to be a contentious presidential election, higher voter turnout, but perhaps for different reasons, and you would be making financial decisions on setting your budget in October without knowing the outcome of the operational in November, okay? So you would, you would have to either make the cuts, right, necessary to balance the budget, and then if we get a pass referendum in November, you could add them back on, or you would have to be willing to operate at a deficit and operate out of fund balance for the year and then have the referendum in November if that was the case. So pros and cons to each of the timelines there. I think I hit everything. Oh, what do you, what do you get? Just high-level view, what would you get for each of these things? There is a PDF that is attached, this was handed out at the committee meetings in, in November, but generally speaking, what you would be looking at as it relates to operational, if we were to do a million-dollar operational, that would eliminate these Esser positions that we have earmarked. However, it would allow us to keep those raises for support staff that we gave back in 2021, the $3 raises that we have, and it would allow us to keep the marketing communications director and that second nurse that we've added. If those get shifted to different positions, you know, it's up to the board, but that's essentially what it would allow us. So we would eliminate one administrative position and we would eliminate those Esser positions, and we would operate basically with the same kind of programming that we're operating now, which is relatively tight, but it would kind of get us through this declining enrollment, we wouldn't have anything extra, and it would allow us to not have to rescind on the $3 raises that we gave our support staff. That's what a million dollars would get us if we want to keep those things. If we look at what an additional 500,000 gets us to go up to 1.5 million, that allows us, the positions would be the same, it allows us to keep those raises, but it would also allow us some additional programming opportunities, okay, for our students. It would put us in a, a, we're not quite so tight mode, right? If we wanted to have an initiative that the board felt strongly about, we needed to update some curriculum textbooks, things like that, we would have some year-over-year money to, you know, have some of those extra things. Again, we're not living in the high life here, okay, but it would allow us to have a little more of a cushion with the 1.5. If we do a $2 million, again, all the positions and everything like that stay the same, but from that standpoint, we would be aiming to be one of the top-paying school districts in southwest Wisconsin and not the 66th or 67th percentile that we've been in. It's really the big change there, perhaps a few more curricular updates. And then the 2.5, that's kind of utopia. This allows us to keep all of those same positions that we have, the Esser positions, as well as becoming the top-paying district. That would be where we are truly saying, we want to be the District of Envy, we're going to have, we're going to become the top-paying school district around, we're going to recruit and retain high-quality staff, and we're going to pay our rock stars, rock star money. And we would make sure that we try to have every, all the opportunities in place, right? We're no longer having to go to PTOs and PATTs to take a field trip to a science facility in Madison. We would now have the ability to offer those things to our students, be able to do those kinds of things. So that's the operational side of things. The capital side of things, Brian Literly had talked about this at the last meeting, kind of have a couple of different tiers. $10 million is on there because, you know, that, that is truly a Band-Aid, let's get some of our high-priority things taken care of. High priority to me might be different than high priority to you. High priority to me is fix, you know, finish the roof on the high school so that we don't have the areas that leak, right? The area that is over the top of us right now is 26 years old, right? So we're going to have to do something at some point. Some parking lot improvements. I believe we have to get AC at our, and climate control at our primary and intermediate school buildings. That's something that was taken out of the 2016 referendum. It was done at a board meeting in public, it wasn't done behind the scenes or anything like that. It was done, but it's been a point of contentious that we don't have climate control in those buildings. I would try to, want to try to advocate for that. If we look at $20 million option, this is one of the slides that Brian had, and I'm referring to the PDF here, this is on slide eight. That would allow us to do some of those same air conditioning improvements at the primary and intermediate school. It would also allow us to do some emergency and technology upgrades. It would allow us to do some lighting improvements. It would allow us to address some high-priority windows and envelope structure in our district. It would allow us to, to have some traffic improvements specifically at our primary and intermediate school where parent pickup, drop-off, and bus drop-off and pickup is problematic. And it would allow us to do some restroom and toilet room upgrades district-wide, specifically to become more ADA compliant. The $28 million option gets all of the stuff I just mentioned. It also allows us to look at some exterior and interior doors, get our data rooms climate-controlled and cooled so that those servers that are kicking out a lot of heat, we don't lose sensitive data there, high-priority flooring replacements, getting some additional parking, some sink and casework upgrades, as well as some auditorium, tech ad, and some weight room improvements up here, and some more flexible furniture and some classroom upgrades as it relates to furniture. And then finally, and then I'll be done talking for a little bit, is the, kind of the $40 million option. And there were two different options that have been presented at this point in time as it relates to the $40 million option. One is to add on to the high school here and get an auxiliary gym and a fitness center slash weight room for our, for our students in an upgrade fashion. That would be adding on, but then as we were talking about that, we said, why would we need to build when we have, you know, an unused campus, you know, just a few hundred yards down the, down the road? So that's when the idea of what would it look like if we talked to the county and see if that's, you know, available for us to acquire? That conversation has not happened yet. I will be talking with county administrators to see their feelings on it. Again, I don't want the public or the board to think that this is, we don't even know if this is an option, right? We don't even know if the county wants to pursue that, you know, is it something that they want the school district to have? My whole thought, well, our whole thought behind, you know, inquiring about Simons was that we've heard rumblings that Simons may be in danger of being able to be part of our community long-term, and they may have to look at an outside source to, to acquire that. So the thought is, is there a way that we can truly have a win-win-win for the county, the city, and the school district and all the stakeholders in the community by providing stability and knowing that Simons is secured long-term for our community? Yeah, you know, if there are other plans for Simons, that's not something that we have to do. I think that there are some programmatical benefits and some opportunities that we could have for our school district if, if the school district were to have that, but the biggest goal would be to really make sure that that stays part of our community long-term. In addition, we do need an auxiliary gym, and we've got a gym that could potentially be upgraded and used there as well. So those are kind of the two options that we've talked about. Of course, this can look anything in between as well, right? I mean, this is truly where the survey from the community will become handy and to know whether or not the Simons is even an option, the county is even, if it's even an option or not. So now with that, that's kind of the full spectrum of where we're at, how we got to where we're at, and I'll turn it over to our board presidents to leave a discussion and maybe where we can go next.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ward. So for the sake of time on Agenda 10A, I just want to get a quick straw poll here, poll survey from the board, and if you're for or against a referendum. If the majority obviously would be against, then 10A would go pretty quick. If the majority is for Agenda, Agenda Adam 10A, then might be a little bit more discussion involved. So I guess it's going around the table here. Anybody opposed to the idea of a referendum?
So just so I can be clear on, on the question, since we're not talking about what the dollar lump is at this point, it's just, yes, I think we need to go for a referendum, or no, I think we're just going to operate way back.
Yep. To avoid potential problems with politics and with voters out there, I don't want to give impressions that we're, that you're voting for a specific thing, more so just, are you for or against going to referendum? Let the public decide what it is they, you know, through the survey, if we choose to go that route, what route, you know, as far as the question that we would take. Obviously, at that point, we'd also have input in it, but for tonight, I would just ask that we avoid going down that road of, I'm for this option and I'm for that option, et cetera, et cetera. More so, just are you for or against?
So Bill, we need to go to a referendum?
Um, I, I would feel the same. I took some discussion points at some point, but it would be...
Yeah, I'd be along with these folks, just some clarification questions later on. My question?
Um, I don't know if they think it's a matter of whether they're for it or against it. I think it's a matter of if it's needed, and it looks like it's needed. So that's it.
Yes, as well. I mean, is there, I guess, what clarifying questions do you have that would be most likely appropriate, you know?
I guess, I guess for, for myself, you know, I, I feel like the communication is the key to anything successful. And I feel that on the last referendum, there was obviously some confusion with the community, and I just want to...
The 2016 referendum or 2020?
Correct. Well, 2020, I think a little bit on both.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen again. I think that, I just want to be crystal clear with the community that they know exactly what will be covered and what won't be covered. And, you know, I want to make sure that we have those important conversations like you talked about with the city, the county, the Simons Foundation, on where that, you know, where that is going, and, and have all that information and that input before we make that decision. So I just, I just, it just sounds like there was a lot of miscommunication, a lot of misunderstanding, and I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen again. You know, we're relatively a new board and going into that, and so I just want to get us off on the right foot.
I would like to add to that because that's kind of something that I wrote down was, and not to go into a deep discussion, but I guess my point being, we can try and communicate as, as well as we can, and a lot of that can be participation, lack of participation from the community, but I think we need to try everything in our power to be successful with the communication that goes out. And that's what I'm, I think, concerned about with the timeline, is that with leading in to 10A with the survey, I guess that's my fear, is that if we are not giving as much information as possible, because I do think it's going to take probably more than one attempt, maybe more than two, to get that out there, that if we start taking these surveys, I just feel like we might be setting ourselves up to fail on that survey. If we don't allow ourselves enough time to get communication out, to explain what you just explained. I think you did a great job explaining it. I think that's why we're all probably saying, yes, we need to go to a referendum, but five people heard it. That's what I'm worried about, I guess, is that. I think if people hear what you just said, that's our key to being successful, and that's what I'm kind of worried about.
Mr. Ward, correct me if I'm wrong, that's part of why, part of the package that we have and why we hired Nexus to do the survey and to be able to, not the survey, but put the package together and maybe part of that communication process to help us have better communication, because obviously seven of us know each other, you need to have groups that have done this before.
Right, yeah. So typically, the timeline and the way that it would work is that the board would, you know, identify a need, right? Like we, we will be broke and, you know... Like, we will be broke in, you know, four to six years if we don't do something, right? Or we're going to have leaky classrooms. We've got to explore this, right? But we don't know what the tax tolerance for the community is. So you hire a group or you conduct a survey to gather that information, and then based on that information, decide, yep, this is what we're going to do, this is what the community will support. And then that will be done in mid-January, again, four in April. And then from that time, from January 22nd, basically, up until the day of the election, that would be when we would have all of the informational meetings, all of the question and answers, all of the forums, all of the informational pamphlets, all of the, I'm getting to your point here, this is where NEXUS would really help us market and communicate and get the information out there. We can't, as a school, be for or against it. We provide factual information, but it's our job to get that factual information out there to as many people, whether that means we're going to send a mailer to everybody, we're going to, you know, I don't know what it entails, right? But that's where their expertise will help us. But that's kind of how it will work. We would get some initial information from the community, what they will support, right? And then we make the decision, and then it's really getting the information and the communication out there into, this is what we're going to get, this is what, this is what the tax impact will be, this is what we get as a school district, as a community, and if we don't pass it, these will be the sacrifices we would have to make. Like, I think it's, we would have to relay all of that information from January 23rd through April 4th or whatever the date is.
I just kind of want to ask a hard question. I mean, because, because this is how kind of things went down in 2020, I felt like, is that we did a lot, but I just, if we do the initial survey to see what we get from the community and it's 100%, we don't want anything, I mean, what do we do? That's, and I know it's probably a premature question, but I think that's the part of, I don't get listened to, nobody hears me, and that type of a thing, and so that's, I think, just really hard, because there isn't a need for it. And so I just want to, you know, do whatever we need to do to get that out there, and then I just think sometimes it's, we didn't listen initially, even though we want to take the next how many months to really push it, we've already, it just, I want to be better on the front end, I guess, because it seems like people get frustrated by that.
One of the things that I think I learned or witnessed in 2020 was, we sent out the survey, got a really good response. We had 860-some people send back. Those responses said that the community would support the $1.25 million operational and up to $22 million in capital, and for, you know, for whatever reason, we decided to go for 27 million, and it failed by this much. So had we listened to the survey and the information that we got back from the community, we probably would have, would have passed it. Now, inflation went, took off, and we might not have been able to do what we wanted to do for 22 million anyway, but it might have been a blessing with the skies. But I do think that the information we got back from the survey was really, really valuable. I just don't know that we put enough stock into listening to it.
And I think you answered this at our last meeting when we talked about this, but you can kind of word things in a way to do one, one part for operational, one part for capital, and the two questions.
Those would be your two questions, one operational and one capital.
Okay.
They would be two separate questions, and those would be the only two questions we could ask in 2024.
Okay.
So in other words, you can't, one question can't encompass both capital and operational as a package. Those are two separate questions. Because one, one takes on additional ongoing levy, and the other is borrowing on a bond.
And in the worst-case scenario, as Mrs. Ward's pointed out, say that the community said $0 across the board is what they're willing, then hypothetically, in order to continue the staffing at the current numbers, then we may have an option to not defees as much of the debt in order to stay afloat?
We would not be able to use that defeasance money for operational. It has to be used for debt only. So that's law. So if it didn't pass in terms of operational, then we would have two choices. We could operate under using fund balance to cover our deficit for until it's gone, or we have to short-term borrow again, which we could probably get by a year without having to do that, short-term borrow that is, or make the necessary cuts to balance the budget. They do go hand-in-hand so much, though. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't matter if we have $2.5 million and we compare people well, if, you know, all of our roofs are leaking and we can't, you know, they have to spend it on suspension upgrades every time they drive through our parking lot. By the same token, it doesn't matter if we have brand-new shiny building, but we don't have any staff that want to work here, right? So we do, we can't keep the, the electrical bills. So we do have to find that balance between the two, even though they'll be two separate questions. I don't want to step on your toes, so just direct if this is wrong here, but I sensed fairly unanimous, if not unanimous, that we have to do something, right? Mr. President, would you be opposed to taking a straw poll on whether or not we think April or November? Because again, if the timeline is November, then we'll have to do something right now, right? If it's April, we'll probably do it. We're not behind the eight ball, but we don't have time to delay either.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I was kind of heading that direction anyways, based on the questions. I feel like there was a little bit of apprehension as far as pushing too fast and not getting the information out, giving people time to digest it. So, yeah, I've been going around the room. Is it April or is it spring or fall?
I feel just with, especially with the budgeting portion of it, if we don't make the decision in April, we're going to have a really hard time in October to set the budget for the next four years without having, we have to operate as if we're not doing anything. And so then we'd have, we'd be forced into making decisions that we might not have to make otherwise. I think April would be a better decision. I think there's time to get all the community, all the information that they need, to be able to make a good decision, because just the packet that they put together for us with all the details. And see, correct me if I'm wrong, again, this $40 million capital isn't, doesn't even cover everything that really could be done, right?
That is correct. If we, Brian, it was like 82 million in total if we were to do everything that was...
If of high priorities, it would be like 48 million, like immediate, zero, five-year need, but if you include in medium and low priority needs, that number that Steve stated is...
That gets us out of 10 to 12 years if we were to put like 80 million into it. We would be good for everything. So, no, it doesn't. What happened?
So, and part of that then is the wonder, if it takes us to do anything, the worst things are going to be, and it's going to take more to fix structural. So more window casings don't get fixed, the longer roofs don't get fixed, that means there's more problems coming later. So I think being, we're moving on April, I think we're going to do something.
I would say...
Fall.
I can go either way. I like the idea of avoiding a contentious election, and those who would come out in April might come out specifically towards this topic, have a reason to go vote. One note, in our previous committee meeting, a local community member who seems to be in the know, just an FYI, it sounds as if the campus, they're potentially not doing anything from a decision-making standpoint until at least the end of June. So for any of the pie in the sky $40 million thought processes, we may be asking for money on ideas that can't even be a possibility yet for months to come, and so, just something to kind of keep in the back of your mind. But I can go with, I think, a few months, and with as thorough as NEXUS has been, I imagine their, their kind of marketing blitz is sufficient and enough time likely.
I think I would prefer April, but like Neil said, I think, I mean, I could be talked into waiting till November, but I think April probably would be the better option, just because of budgeting and other reasons that can state it, that can state it.
Ideally, April, I would say, which is obviously given time to get communication out, which, I mean, this timeline was given to us by NEXUS, and they had it outlined on what the deadlines were. I just want to be real clear on what's our communication line. But ideally, I'd say April.
Straight to April?
Brian, can you answer for us, or would there be any danger in April from your standpoint, from NEXUS's standpoint, is are we, like, really tight, or are we still, just for the record, comfortable with our timeframe if we get the resolution and get...
Yeah, you guys are set up to go at either time period. Ellie, if you're on, she can unmute too and speak up, but, yeah, you guys are set for, we kind of put you guys in position to make a decision for this January, or if you felt it was too fast, pump the brakes, and you could always wait till, I think, a decision in August is what you would need for a November referendum.
Can Ellie unmute?
There she is. Ellie, can you hear us?
I just text her, I can't hear her, so...
So you feel comfortable that April would be fine, these routes with the board?
Yes, correct. April, the other benefit is that you could actually start bidding things in the fall to prep for the following summer. If you, if you waited till November, then it'd be difficult to have things. Usually, you want to bid no later than January, February for that following summer before lead times, and people get booked for summer work.
I don't know if people listening online can hear Ellie, we just cannot hear her in this room. Let's...
Mr. Hunter's point, I would not recommend to the board that we would engage in any kind of a referendum in April that would be contingent on acquiring any property without that signed, sealed, and delivered well before that happened. And, you know, if that's truly an option, unless the county says, you know, at our next meeting, that, yep, we're ready to do this, this can go to our board, you know, that might be a pretty tight timeframe to try to do that portion of acquisition in April, because I just don't know where their timeframe is at. Last thing we...
I do agree, being able to, yes, we have money dedicated for an auxiliary gym, just putting that... Because the fear is, if we just act in wait till November, and then June 30th goes around, the county says, we're ready to make a deal, we got nothing. Is the board good with, you can add actions? Mr. Ward, are you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's move on then to Agenda 10, action items, 10A, the Morris Leatherman survey.
Okay, so this is the survey that Ellie spoke about, that she was here in person, and Brian may have to answer any questions if we can't get Ellie connected through audio here this evening, but background information is on there. Morris Leatherman, we've conducted a survey, and they would essentially, this is, they make phone calls, right? They would be responsible for collecting 400 respondents from our community, and they would all be, you know, voters, right? These are not, you know, just planting people, right? These are real people, real residents of our, of our community, and they would actually ensure that they had a certain number targeted to each demographic group, right? So they would not all be phone calls to, you know, 35 to 50-year-old adult, adults with students in the district, right? They would not just be that, they would hit that demographic group, but they would also hit other demographic groups, from retirees to everything in between, and our different municipalities. And that's my understanding on how that would work, Brian, my incorrect in that?
Oh, yeah, you're exactly right.
So with that, it does come at a price tag. The price tag is $20,000. This is not a budgeted money that we have. This would be something that we would have to take out of fund balance. It, just for reference, cost us about, all in, about $9,000 with the survey that we conducted in 2020 internally, by the time we sent everything out. So, you know, it would be twice that cost, but it would be a third party, you know, so it would not be, it would be very transparent in terms of, well, we just collected this and relayed the information that we wanted to. No, if this is a credible source that we would provide, they would come back, do the board report, and we would ensure that we hit all of those different demographic makeups, which is something that we can't ensure if we try to do something internally. So, and they would, they would get feedback back. There is, one of the PDFs is a draft of the survey. There's 50 questions that they would answer to the people willing to take the survey. Many of them are just general demographic questions. If they've already met that, that demographic area, the survey would end pretty quickly if they reached that, if they identified as, as one of the areas that they, they don't need any more data on, and they would just focus their attention on places that they do. But then, as you go through the survey, then there becomes more questions as far as, you know, what they would support and what they wouldn't support. For instance, question 23 says, which of the following statements comes closest to your opinion on the idea of a referendum? I would vote against almost any proposal to increase local property taxes for education. I would vote for some proposals, or I would vote in favor of nearly any proposal. That's just one question, one of the 50 questions. Then, if there are specific questions that we are looking to gather for an additional $200 per question, we could tack on a couple of questions. For instance, if we really wanted to know, does the public support the acquisition of the county buildings, right, Simons and the gym? We could make that be one of our specific questions and tack that on. We don't have to decide those things tonight. We would, we would want to work, you'd need to provide me some information on what specific questions we'd be looking for. If you know those, we can certainly make it part of the proposal, but otherwise, that would be a recommendation based on what I heard in our previous agenda topic, is that we hire Morris Leatherman to conduct the survey, they would do this during December, which truthfully should give us the most pessimistic view of where people are really at, right? Because this is right after property taxes come out. So if the data that they provide says the community will support X, Y, and Z, I think that we would stand a really, really good chance, knowing that that would be accurate. And if anything, it would probably be a little bit more conservative, because property taxes did just come out, and in April, they, they may not have quite that sting that they may experience. Brian, do you have anything to add as it relates to NEXUS or Ellie?
Uh, no.
Morris Leatherman, sorry.
Ellie, test, test. No, other than we've gotten great results from Morris Leatherman. When Peter comes and does the presentation to school boards, they are fascinated with numbers and all the data collected. It's very worth the money spent. It's invaluable compared to just a random opt-in. It's invaluable compared to just a random opt-in. We would say it's more of a poll than a survey, just statistically accurate, like a Marquette Law Poll, or if you did the whole state of Wisconsin, you would still only poll 400 people to get the exact same results. Ellie said they still can't hear her. Okay.
I guess the question I have is, Morris Leatherman, if you're positively contacting information, is that information that's coming from school records? Is it coming just from public records?
Public, public.
It's obviously a change of...
Data records.
...mine versus land mine.
Yeah, and they are persistent. They'll have a non-response rate of probably 5%, but their poll, their, everything is accurate, plus or minus 5% just like any other poll you would do, depending on, you know, factors that could, that could factor in. But like Steve mentioned, mid-December is the, is a really good spot to do this sort of December poll.
Of 400, count surveys, statistically significant enough to get accurate data?
If you do any more than 400, it's marginally better, not by much. Ellie, we can see you.
Any more questions from the board?
The motion to approve the Morris Leatherman survey as presented to conduct a community survey, so it includes all the information.
And otherwise, it doesn't give this separate timeline.
Okay, so who can amend it then? Is there a motion to approve using Morris Leatherman to conduct a community survey regarding a referendum as presented? I'll make it. Motion, Mr. Huntimer, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Dickman, discussion? Aye.
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 All right. On to 10B, policy 3426, early retirement teachers due June 30th, 2025.
Okay, so this topic of OPAB and early retirement for teachers has been to a couple different committee levels, and now it's at the board level. The idea here is that while we continue to discuss options for what retirement package or an OPAB, other post-employment benefits looks like for our teachers, we don't want to create this additional angst for our staff in thinking that it's going to go away, or that they have to retire now in order to be assured that they have this policy. And so while this board cannot take action that locks future boards into, you know, for instance, you can't, you can't say, we're gonna have this policy in place through the year, 2050, right? That's locking a future boards into something that you can't legally lock them into. I think it would be good for our board to make a good faith commitment in the form of a motion that's in our minutes to keep policy 3426, which is our early retirement for teachers, in place as it currently sits through June 30th, 2025. This would allow all of our teachers that are possibly thinking about retirement this year, for fear that it might go away, to know that it will for sure be in place through next year, at least as much assurance as we can legally give them, right? And then through that, we would be continuing to work with the Personnel Committee, different options, perhaps a referendum now comes into play and what that might look like, but we would be able to have a plan in place for, okay, this is the new benefit, and then here's the transition and how this looks, and without having to create any worry for anybody. So I think kind of ensuring that, at least a good handshake with our staff, letting them know that this policy will remain intact through the 24, 25 school year, I think would be very beneficial and helpful. That's really what we would be acting on tonight. Personnel chair, did I miss anything that you want to add?
That's it.
Any questions?
All right. Is there a motion then to make a good faith commitment to keep policy 3426, early retirement teachers, in place through June 30th, 2025? So moved?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Balian, seconded by Mrs. Troxel, discussion? Mr. Balian?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, down to 10C, policy revisions.
Okay, so there are two PDFs attached as it relates to policy revisions, and these policy revisions, this is one of the benefits that the service of Neola provides us. They make sure that our policies are worded correctly, that they're clear, that they're up-to-date language, and that they comply with state law, okay? And so one PDF is the technical corrections, and so if you click on that PDF, you get a summary of, of all of the things that don't really change the content of the policy, just change the wording. Maybe it's a little clarification, maybe it's more modern language or terminology that's used, maybe it's pronoun language, things like that, just keeping our, our policies up-to-date without changing anything contextually. Now, that's what the technical changes are. Our policy says that administratively, we can make those changes if we see a misspelling, those kinds of things, but I need to notify the board of them. So that's what you're being notified of, those technical corrections. The other, the second PDF is the summary of Neola recommendations. Now, this has been vetted through the Policy Committee. I've provided the summary, it's a five-page PDF, and it talks about all of the different revisions that are made. Almost all of them are one of a couple of different categories, either law changes so that the policy is in compliance with the law, or some restructuring of policies, moving these two policies into one policy, right? Those all require revisions then, so there's some consolidations to make it clearer. For instance, there's policies in both the 3000s, which is our certified staff policy, and the same policy is in our 4000s, which is our support staff policy. They're combining those into one policy now, and putting them in the 7000s, I believe it is, FMLA language, things like that. So the summary is, is on that second PDF. I'll leave it at that, but I can try to answer any specific questions if you have that relates to specific policy. Again, policy looked at these, we've made any necessary changes that they've had, most of it was the Neola recommended, recommended policies. Usually the board will see these revisions twice a year. So I know it looks lengthy, but it's really more cleanup than anything. Again, Policy Chair, anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion then to approve policy revisions recommended by Neola as presented effective immediately? So moved? Motion by Mr. Balian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Wertz, discussion? Mrs. Troxel?
Aye.
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 All right, now, 10D, from our modified agenda, the Pupil Services Grant, the Stronger Connections Grant.
Okay, so this is, this grant is a grant that some folks in the Pupil Services are looking to apply for. It's a grant that they're asking for in the amount of $300,000. It's possible we could get awarded less than that, but you'll see the full grant abstract and the budget. It does involve, so it's potential position increases and some services with this. Those would be contingent on getting the grant, having the money to fulfill everything in the grant, and only for as long as the grant was awarded to us. So what questions does the board have?
I'd ask it to be pulled just for the fact that it is a grant, so you are hiring people basically on a limited term, and we're kind of running into the cliff with the ester funds, same problem. If you can keep people through attrition or something like that, that's great, but really it's a short-term position unless, like the Partners for Prevention, where the grant can be reapplied for later on, which there's no guarantee that that's out there. So that was my main concern with it.
That we would hire these people and then not be able to sustain them?
Right.
Unfortunately, that is a concern with any grant that we do have, but having it for a short period of time, in my opinion, would be beneficial to at least try to do something and see, see if we can make some connections. I understand the concern.
So this is essentially, if I'm reading this correctly, it's essentially for a year and a half?
Through the...
From September 30th, 26?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board?
Do these need to be full-time positions, or could they be essentially add-on positions for our current staff that would be funded so that would eliminate the, hey, we're gonna hire somebody, and then in September, there'd be...
Potentially, some of them could, but when you're looking at like a mental health therapist, it'd be, those would be full-time positions that could help if we had the criteria, but if they did, they probably wouldn't be able to teach and do that as well, if you have to shift.
With the ester positions that were created, knowing that that was a short-term, scheduled to be a short-term, when most people were hired from those positions, what was their reaction to knowing that they were going to be on essentially a year-to-year contract based on funding?
Um, we, we posted those positions for that, so there was very little surprises for people, and that was part of the interview and making sure that everybody was aware of it. I don't know, maybe our building folks could say they said it on the interviews more, if we have any, like, maybe some general questions, what happens after it's done, right? But anything you care to share?
As Steve said, it was posted as a one-year, so people went into that, with that knowledge. And for our staff that were already veterans in our district, that their position may have been affected because of the planning that went into identifying the positions that were going to be ester positions at different grade levels, some of our staff did opt, some of our teachers did opt to explore a different grade level to help ensure they weren't in an ester position with a cliff line.
All right, is there a motion to approve the Stronger Connections Grant as presented? I'll make it. Motion made by Mr. Huntimer, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman, discussion? Mr. Ballina?
Nay.
Aye.
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 Make a motion and move into closed session pursuant to section 19 of the 851 CE and/or F, under the Wisconsin statutes 118.125, to consider employment, promotion, compensation of employees discussing individual employee hiring and administrative evaluations, and to discuss individual people information, student discipline, and student open enrollment applications, and individual people information related to those applications. The board may take action on these issues in closed session if necessary and appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board entertaining motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Wertz, discussion? Mr. Huntimer?
Aye.
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 Thank you.